Good morning. I would like to call and order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting of 10:00 a.m., meeting of October 22nd. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and please rise with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
O merciful Creator, Your head is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful of Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisible, liberity and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the row?
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Present.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District One, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Now, we have a quorum present and all commissioners are present at the desk. I would like to remind people that this is time for public comment. This is one of the times that we, the board, do not speak back to the public. So you have your three minutes to speak. We listen to you. I have extra staff members here today to follow you out of the room and answer any questions you have directly to that staff member. But we're prepared to be able to hopefully answer all your questions. So now, public comments. So we're given the opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those people here and signed in. Then, we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered on WebEx link and currently on queue. We request that when you address the board, comments are directed not personally toward a commissioner or a staff member, but rather direct your questions to the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will sound, and you will have one minute left to finish your comments. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you are asked to finish your comments. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have a... Oh, excuse me. Mr. Clerk. My script never knows when we've got a lady or a man.
Yeah, you never know.
Okay. But would you please call those two that have signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. First up, the Honorable Mike Fasano, tax collector.
Welcome, Mr. Fasano.
Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioners, good morning. It won't take but a couple of minutes. I'll pass my three minutes. I apologize. Couple of things I just want to bring up to date, if I may. First, to thank you. Thank you all, our county administrator, Mike, and his staff, EOC. It's been a rough three weeks, there's no question about it. You all have stepped up to the plate amazingly, but your staff has done an outstanding job. And I don't know what more they could do, and they continue to do their best. And hopefully, God willing, some of those who are still hurting, some way they'll be able to get back. I have great concerns, great concerns about those who have been put out of their home, maybe not able to fix their home, or maybe their home was uninhabitable. They have no insurance, zero insurance. And I was concerned about this when I was a legislator, of the mess that would be when we got hit with a major storm. And I think we're going to see a lot of people not having a home to go back to. With that said, congratulations on a job well done to everyone, and thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Couple of things we did over the past year. We bought a piece of property in the Angeline community, right on the north side of 52 at Angeline, for $2 million. We're already in the process of doing our architectural work and our engineering work. We'll start groundbreaking in next year. And I tell you this because it's going to cost us several more million dollars to build it. We're not asking for any money. We'll do it from the tax collector's budget. We also purchased, which was outstandingly helpful, and this year, we purchased a $400,000 generator for our Land O' Lakes office that kept us going, to keep an office open to serve our Pasco residents. We have plans and the great help of Heather and others at your county staff, and there goes my three minutes.
No, that's just...
I have a check to give you. Is that okay?
You have one more.
Take that next minute.
We plan on moving our Wesley Chapel office, which we're staying right now and doing a lease. We're moving into, going to build a new office in the Wesley Chapel area that the county has donated to us, and we'll build a new office there. Our starting salary now is at $20 an hour, something that we've moved from $19 to, I'm sorry, from, gosh, salary that I think started at $9 an hour, now we're at $20 an hour. Our turnover is almost little to none. We were able to just give out significant retention bonuses to all our employees recently, just about a week or so ago, and we're looking good at the tax collector's office. Your EOC director is second to none in the state of Florida, and that's what I hear throughout the state from other counties and other legislators. With all of that, I think I'm done. I want to give you a check for $5.6 million today.
Okay.
So I hope that will be helpful. So I'll give it to Harold. I know he'll take good care of that check.
Well, thank you for coming, and the reason you have such good help is they've got one of the best bosses they could have in Pasco County.
Thanks you very much.
You do a great job, and we watch you, and we all appreciate everything you do do.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, it's 5.7 million we're giving today, and that's because my staff does an excellent job. But also, I need to, you know, make it clear that that check is going to start depleting over the next couple of years as we build our Angeline office, okay? This way, there's no surprises. I hope that will be helpful towards whatever you need to use it for. God bless you. Have a great day.
All right, God bless you. Thank you.
I'm not sure of this name. Shumesi Greer?
State your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Shumesi Greer. I live at 8205 Tangier Square Apartments, Newport, Ritchie, 33655. I'm a new resident of Pasco County. And my concern is that I was impacted by the storm, hurricane, two hurricanes biting bite. My industry is that I'm a caregiver. I haven't been working since October because everybody evacuated. I evacuated with my family. So my apartment filed eviction on me. You know, they're not trying to work with me because I told them I was impacted by the storm. So also, I'm kind of like advocate with Floater Rising, so I'm from Hillsborough County. So that's why I'm here, so I know about coming to the county commission to speak for our residents. And also, the office told me one resident had gave her her key because she was impacted by the storm. No negotiating, nothing. This plane, you're evicted, you know what I'm saying? It's like, I came here for a new change to get on my feet because I was impacted by... I had COVID-19. I was on oxygen, I was very sick, so I lost a lot. So I came here for a new start. Now, it's turning bad because of the storm. I'm finna get evicted because I can't find resources to help me. I'm not familiar with this county. So it's like, I'm speaking for me and other people in the community that need help. You know, that's what I do. So if y'all see me on the news, I speak for a fundist. If you pull up A News now, I speak about the fundist to help peoples that's impacted by disasters also.
Okay.
I think Mrs. Pearson is going to speak with you.
Okay.
Kathy Pearson will meet you in the back there. She's going back there.
She's amazing.
She'll answer your questions. Thank you.
Tangier Square, I think, is one of our low-income communities that is run by a nonprofit. Pretty sure, on 54, Old 54.
Got a next person? Bridget Underlot.
This is her phone.
Oh.
Oh, might have been hers.
Good morning. Hi.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
Bridget Underlot, 1620 20 Berry Court. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here today to address the reoccurring flooding issues that continue to plague several of our communities, including Thousand Oaks, 2.5, 2 to 5, 6 to 9, Thousand Oaks Multi, Trinity Oaks, Wingate, Chelsea Place, and the business district behind Walgreens on Mitchell Boulevard, which also includes the church property, and that's only to name a few. During Hurricane Milton, we were told this was a 100-year storm, but this explanation rings hollow when our communities flood during regular storms and heavy rain seasons. This isn't a once-in-a-century problem. It's become a regular occurrence that threatens our homes, our safety, and our peace of mind. I'm here to ask three critical questions. First, what is your concrete plan to address these reoccurring floods? We need more than temporary solutions about exceptional weather events. Second, regarding the little road pumps, were they all operational during the last flood? And if not, why? Because this is basic infrastructure that should be functioning when we need it most. Third, and most crucially, how do you plan to ensure that emergency access during storms, when these areas flood, that although we're not just dealing with property damage, you're potentially cutting off emergency services from reaching the residents in crisis at the time? Let me be personal for a moment. I invested my entire life savings to move here. I chose this area specifically because it was marked as a non-flood zone, high-end community. My neighbors and I believed that we were buying into a secure future, but instead, we live in constant anxiety every time rain is forecasted. This isn't just about property values, although they're certainly important. This is about an emotional toll of watching our neighbors' homes flood repeatedly. It's about going to bed during storms, wondering if we'll wake up to water in our living rooms. It's about wondering if our retirement investments in these homes were a terrible mistake. We need a comprehensive solution that, number one, addresses the root cause of these flooding issues, ensures that all the pump stations are properly maintained and operational, provides better emergency management during these storms, and restores our community to their intended non-flood zone status with remediation. The residents of these communities, myself in this area, choose this area carefully. We want to stay here, we want to thrive here, but we need your leadership and action to make that possible. I look forward to your specific plans to address these issues. Thank you for your time.
We got someone to speak to you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all that have signed up in advance.
Is there anyone in the room that did not sign up, wished to speak?
Did she leave a phone number?
Please come forward. Come forward and state your name and address.
Okay, what was her name? Bridget? Let me write her name down.
Pastor Jen Kerewak, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida, the Pasco Spring Hill. I just was moved to come today, and I wasn't going to come, but it was really on my heart today for a few things, after seeing the incredible devastation and, you know, all that this young woman just brought forward. So many people do the same thing. I did the same thing. I spent my life savings to move to Florida from Illinois, mainly, if I'm honest, for the weather, not so much about the investment in a physical thing, in a home, but in myself, and to thrive and to live in a place where I believe that I could thrive. I lived in Pinellas County for many years, and after the congestion just honestly squeezed me out because it was just incredible, the vast number of people that retired of Pasco County. And I understand that we're trying to do something similar in our own way in Pasco County. You know, I think that the congestion and the rate of development and all the things that people previously had been concerned about, we find ourselves in a position today in Pasco County where people are flooding even inland, where they might be in an X-zone, a non-flood, non-evacuation zone, and that they're being flooded there. Many, many issues that I know that are going to take time to address. But, you know, this is what was on my heart today. I don't usually bring a word from God to y'all, but today, I just needed to share Psalms 145:17. "The Lord is righteous in all His ways, gracious in all His works. The Lord is near to all who call upon Him and to all who call upon Him in truth." And if we're truthful with ourselves and with one another, I would encourage you, what I am receiving from people that have reached out to me in many different ways, many different formats, you know, social media, wherever, it doesn't matter. I don't even know some of the people, and they are very concerned about the lack of what appears to be the lack of oversight with regards to the building. And perhaps we should consider a moratorium in the same way that Zephyr Hills did, to identify these stormwater issues, to identify the issues of the current residents, the people who have already invested all of their life savings into this community, and look to you for your leadership, and seek you for wise counsel. And so I just pray that each of you do seek wise counsel, not just from men.
Your time's up. Kathy, you want to speak to her, or you got somebody there?
Okay. Okay.
There's someone in the back that can speak to you outside there? Yeah, that's good. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak that was not signed up? Come forward if you want to speak. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Edward Sepulveda, and 5852 Seafarers Drive, Newport, Ritchie, in Pasco County. I just wanted to come up here just to thank the whole board for the organization and the help that was out there for everyone who suffered through these past two hurricanes. It was amazing to see so many boots on the ground coming from the commissioners all together. So I just wanted to say we appreciate that, and thank you very much because it just showed the unity that the board has with the community, and how they're reachable and easy to speak to, and it was just a wonderful coordinating situation that was done really quick and fast, very fast. So as a resident of Pasco County, I just want to thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for all you did too.
Yep. Okay, anyone else in the room wish to speak? See no one? We have anyone on WebEx?
We do not have anyone on call in.
Okay. All right. Then we'll close public hearing and move into consent. Somewhere, I've got a full sheet. I have C3, pull and discuss. C38, pull. C54, pull. C63, pull. C15, withdraw. C22, withdraw. C49, withdraw. C64, withdraw. And C65, withdraw. Do I have a motion on the rest items on consent?
Move approval of the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
So I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We'll start with C3, Commissioner Mariano.
Yes, I'd like to present this resolution. Mr. Sepi was just up here, and his mother, Grace, was... They've done just so many great things, I just wanted, I wanted them recognized today, so appreciate the board's indulgence. Could we read the resolution?
Would we do that now or after we approve consent?
Why don't you finish the consent agenda?
Yeah, let's finish the consent.
That's fine. Yeah, we can do that. We'll do the resolution next.
Okay, we'll wait on reading that, and we'll move on to C38 to pull.
Mr. Chairman, C38 was pulled on our request, just as part of the copies weren't there, and just asked that it be contingent on clerk's final review.
Okay, so that item plus these other items are the same thing? Because they're all...
Well, we can handle them together. C54...
You're going to have to, you're going to need individual motions anyway.
We got to do it individually.
Move approval of C38 with a clerk's final approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. C54, pull.
C54 was just received a short time ago, and again, with the combined agendas, there was a little bit of volume this time, so we'd asked that it be contingent on clerk review.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Can I ask a question on that one? I mean, we've been doing that for a while, so what's the issue on it? I mean, this isn't the first year we've done this, right?
No, ma'am. This is the first renewal. However, it's, there was a, or we had a change in leadership in the fire department, so there was a...
Oh, just change of, okay.
That's change of leadership, yeah. Okay, that's understandable.
That's the only change.
C63?
C63, again, this is a situation where you've delegated authority, continued on final documents being prepared to the county administrator for his execution. As this is board document, we had just asked that we coordinate for attestation as a board document, and then will be distributed in normal process.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
This is a agenda, this was on the addenda, and again, just contingent on clerk having a chance to review. And then, we'd recommend approval.
PFM is obtaining signatures of the folks who were awarded under this, under the multiple vendors, which is why it didn't get to the clerk's office on time.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. The other items on the back are all withdrawn, so that ends the consent agenda, except we'll go back to C3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I wanted to pull this because I really wanted to recognize, matter of fact, Ed and Gracie, come on up, please. I wanted to recognize Gracie's pantry. They do a phenomenal job for us seniors. I got this first experience probably a couple of months ago, and I just wanted to, at that point, bring them forward to show the, show everybody what they're doing. And fortunately, I think the rest of the board has now seen what they've been doing as we've been going through this. And again, it's just, I can't tell you how many times, how much I appreciate what you do for us seniors every step of the way. And I told you, I want to try to give as much help as I can, so I think, starting with the recognition is probably a good way to go.
Clerk, that's the resolution. Resolution number 25013, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Gracie's Food Pantry for their service to the citizens of Pasco County. Whereas Gracie's Food Pantry was founded by Gracie...
I'm trying to pronounce your last name.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, good.
In 2013, and since then, has successfully opened six pantries and feeds approximately 2,000 to 2,500 people per month. And whereas Gracie's Food Pantry provides high-quality nutritious food at no cost to those struggling with a wide range of issues. And whereas Gracie's Food Pantry depends on volunteers to help sort, pack, and distribute food, and relies on sponsorships from local businesses to help alleviate, or alleviate operating costs. Those sponsors also provide information to patrons regarding health benefits, pharmaceutical benefits, medical offices, home improvements, and more. And whereas Gracie's Food Pantry values the lives of everyone who comes to receive food, all their pantries are set up to provide a dignified shopping experience where the patron can choose the items that they would like to bring home. And whereas since 2013, Gracie's Food Pantry has fed approximately 51,000, excuse me, 840 people, not including additional families, and the homeless population, and has been recognized by several organizations such as the Pasco County Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, and West Pasco Border Railtors. And whereas Gracie's Food Pantry has a mission to alleviate hunger and foster food security in the community by providing healthy and nutritious food, essential resources, and supportive services to seniors, veterans, and families in need. And whereas Gracie's Food Pantry believes that everyone deserves to have access to food that nourishes their body, and they are committed to creating a community where no one goes hungry. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said, "Board hereby commends Gracie's Food Pantry for their service to the citizens of Pasco County, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting, this 22nd day of October, 2024."
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before I let them talk, and I want them to talk, but I just want to say, to give you an example, you know, I went to their different places, they do the distributions at different places. I was amazed that it was so seamless and so well-run, and the people are so appreciative of it. When I recently just came across them, I was calling them because I knew the Pasco Brave down in Newport Ritchie was going to be shutting down. So I gave them a call to go down and, you know, take a look at whatever you might need, what you can fit with your different pantries to make it all work. So they go down there, and I'm going to say, Grace outworked them, loading up the truck. She was phenomenal. She just like gets right in there and goes. When we got done, one of the things that was in there was they had a pallet of produce, apples, ready to go. And he said to me, he says, "I can't take those, but..." go. And he said to me, he says, "I can't take those, but you might want to call the volunteer way." So, not only does he think of himself and what he's doing, but he wants to help funnel it. And I will tell you, that CEO came down, met with me probably like a half an hour later, and we brought out the whole pallet. We unloaded the whole thing. Actually, ended up putting my truck, but we dropped it all over to the volunteer way. It was gone the next day. So all those people get that extra nutrition from good, healthy stuff because of your great thinking and then give me a great idea and that CEO to jump on down the volunteer way to make it all happen. But I just can't thank you enough. I know as I've just seen you guys with your passion going through and I just wanted to recognize you and show your appreciation and just thank you for what you're doing.
I'd like to add something too, if that's okay.
Yes.
I just want to say that I had Ed on speed dial and it didn't matter if it was eight o'clock at night, he would and Grace, if they would come and help serve 200 meals and they were there in a hot second. So, also, we spent several days together, the entire day. We didn't know each other at all. And Ed would just open up his car and they would have tons of fresh, like you said, fresh food, water, supplies, and they are truly amazing. And Ms. Grace, I found her secret to her beauty regimen because she is absolutely gorgeous in her 80s and she outruns circles around Ed, so just thank you guys for everything.
Thank you.
And I first met them at a Trinity Chat luncheon and they were the featured speakers, I guess. So, and I was able to visit their pantry yesterday and what's the name of that location?
You were at Hacienda.
Hacienda Village, yes. And on Thursday in Holiday, they will be providing their pantry and we're bringing, I think, 200 or 150 lunches. Oh, my staff's not here. Yeah. So, if you want to come over, if you haven't seen them in action, you can go from the dedication on Grand Boulevard over to Holiday Lakes to the clubhouse and bring your own donations. I brought them some yesterday. I'm gonna bring more Thursday. So, what a blessing you are to the community and I'm just so grateful that you're doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Wait a minute.
51,840 meals, that's probably way short from what I'm hearing. I tell you, I mean, it's God's work right there. And without you all and your mission, we'd be in a lot worse shape. Your organization and so many others that have stepped in to help people just get something to eat and help them gather their thoughts before they figure out what their next steps in life are going to be. So thank you for your love and your compassion and your care for Pasco County and for each other. So, we're very grateful that you live here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for what you do for your community and the people in your community. So, when you work so hard, sometimes you get tired, but the reality of it is if you love your work, it never seems like a job. So, I'm sure you love your work and you really help a lot of people in Pasco County. We certainly appreciate that. So, thank you.
If you would, please, tell a couple of stories about what you find when you're taking care of these seniors, what it means to them, some of the things you tell me about it gets them through the next cycle from payments.
Well, so many of them are so grateful. When I first started a food pantry, I was...I went to my manager where I live and I said, "We need a food pantry." And said, "Did you ever run a food pantry before?" I said, "No, but I learned." And the reason why I wanted to start it is there were several residents that were having crackers with water for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or yogurt, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or whatever they could afford. Some of them even shared their pets' food. And I felt that because their social security didn't last them till the end of the month, I felt that if I could subsidize that time and give them something to eat, they could be healthy and stay longer. And they were my friends. And I feel that everybody is my friend and I love them all and in all my pantries. But I want to also say that without God, we could not do any of this. Okay.
Yeah, we experienced...we also help families besides the pantries. They call us up and especially when families have...young families have children, it's kind of heartbreaking to...we went to this one young lady's house. She had three children. One was a little girl and I could hear her in the background as we're talking on the phone with the grandmother, "Please, we need food. We need food." And I said to her, I said, "Who is that?" She says, "Oh, that's my granddaughter. She's three years old." She says, "I didn't coach her to do that. She just knew I was calling a food pantry." So I said, "Well, you let her know that we're coming." And so we got together about nine bags of groceries and we went to the house. And here's this little blonde little girl, little chunky cheeks, you know, and, "Oh, thank you, thank you." It was heartbreaking because the young...this young girl was happy to see bags of food as if they were toys. You know, that's how excited she was. And that's what keeps us going. And yeah, if it wasn't for God, He guides us. We're just tools, you know. He helps us to go in the direction we need to go. And with these past, as I said before, with these past two storms that passed by, the organization and the ability to take the lead from the commissioners' offices and be able to guide us in the directions we need to go was extremely helpful. And we were able to feed and help so many people. It didn't matter the age. It didn't matter where they came from. The fact of the matter is they went through a trauma and we were there to help. So, again, I want to thank everyone here too.
Yeah, we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come back.
We're gonna do a picture.
Come back. Before we go to the next item, I'd like to thank all of our staff and all our employees and staff throughout all departments and our leadership and our EOC, all commissions for what you do, because it is very amazing what we've come through in the last three or four weeks and everybody's held up very well. So, it's hard work, but when you're doing the right thing, it's not that hard. We know, we try our best to serve every citizen that we can. So, I appreciate each and everything you do. With that, Mike?
Thanks, sir. Well, it certainly is nice to see everyone in, I don't know, Jeff's suit.
Dressed up.
Daveen, we're without ball caps on. We're in, you know, to echo your comments there, Commissioner Oakley. Yeah, and just to add on, this was quite historic and what an event and what a trying test of our team, both, you know, at the board level and we thank you for the leadership. I mean, we have been in touch daily for the past several weeks on this matter. So, your leadership in that with our team, of course, both my executive team and our emergency management team pulling together various groups across this county to prepare for weather and recover from two storms, you know, back-to-back, as well as our constitutional teams. We would not be anywhere if it weren't for the support too with the sheriff, our first responders, as well as the school board amongst a whole host of other players as we move through that. And let's not forget our not-for-profits and our engaged citizens too as they continue to help. And so, I wanted to give a brief discussion here on both of these hurricanes, both just so we could pull it all together and...
Well, just as an example, Mike, what you're talking about and what I was talking about is today, we expected a lot of people from the public here.
Yes, sir.
And you'll see the room's got extra chairs everywhere you can see. And we reached out to staff to have members behind our ACOs to take care of those questions and answers and get people the right answer. We prepared to do that for this meeting, knowing that a lot of people have been through hard times. But that's some of the preparation you've seen over the last three weeks that the staff and everyone's been doing also through the EOC. So, it's just an example of what we do to reach out to our citizens and do the right thing.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll let you have...
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we will, and there still is a lot to do, no doubt, right? This is...this state is kind of a new normal for the short term, for sure. But our team will continue to work tirelessly. So, I want to just really recap a few things of the events and then just talk about a little bit about what we have done and if the board would like to have any other discussion on that, we can. It's not necessarily just to rehash the past, but a lot's happened in the past month. We actually canceled a board meeting in the middle of this. And it all started with Hurricane Helene, which made landfall September 26th. I think that was a Wednesday or a Thursday in September. I don't recall. It came right off the heels of us passing a budget and came ashore as a category four near Perry. It was not a direct hit, but it was a large storm and pushed an unprecedented amount of storm surge to our county. We saw instances of storm surge 12 to 15 feet in some areas affecting mostly our communities west of US 19. In fact, actually closed US 19. But this was a national-level disaster too, not just Pasco County, state of Florida. This storm pushed all the way up and over 200 people lost their lives as a result of Hurricane Helene, actually, just probably one of the worst in our history. We barely caught our breath and we had Hurricane Milton bearing down on us, making landfall just south of us near Ciesto Key as a Cat 3. Was a extremely strong Cat 5 at one point in time, 185 miles per hour, if I remember seeing some of the reports. Very scary, scary storm. This, we saw your typical hurricane impacts, wind. We saw hurricane-force winds in our county, in our entire region, actually. You know, millions lost power as a result of this. But more attuned for Pasco County, unprecedented levels of rainfall, 15, 18 inches in some areas. And that's a lot of rain in a very short period of time, which has led to prolonged riverine flooding. And, you know, this just sets the stage. And I say unprecedented because this is unprecedented. You know, we often, you hear us talk when we build infrastructure, the 100-year flood event, this and that and the other. And, you know, a 100-year flood event is only something that has, is a storm that only has a 1% chance of happening. That's what that is. And it's kind of been the standard of the state. And, you know, as we talk about resiliency and things in the future, there may be conversations about how we look at those types of things. But until then, that is kind of been the standard with that. And these hurricanes have basically turned that on its head. They've turned a lot of things on their head and we're seeing more and more of these storms. I want to shift to the response of these storms because, you know, you do a lot of work to prepare for a storm. You know, you pump down in areas where you can. You ensure floodgates are working the way that they're supposed to work. You ensure residents have access to sandbags perhaps and the ability to protect their property as well as evacuation orders and things. So, we as a county for these two storms issued two local states of emergency. In fact, we have three local states of emergencies that I sign every week right now to maintain our that. One for Debbie back in August and then one for Helene and one for Milton. And we continue to do that because that makes us eligible so our taxpayers don't have to bear the brunt of these costs. We issued evacuation orders for both storms. And I will tell you, the evacuation orders in the first storm in Helene, it's, you know, we should have had more heating of those evacuation orders. Fortunately, we did see a tenfold increase in evacuations, at least in terms of our shelter populations, when Milton came through. But again, as I mentioned before, the storms were catastrophic and our emergency services teams were inundated with calls. I was in the EOC on both nights when these hurricanes came through. I remember specifically Helene because the calls for service kept popping up and popping up. And as I'm sitting there in the 911 center watching the calls for service that our guys cannot reach to, and same with Milton, hundreds of calls that were backlogged. I think even up to 800 probably at one point in time, I think during Milton, just calls for service that we could not get to. And so, our first responders ended up plucking approximately, provided 1,200 rescues from both storms. So, we rescued 1,200 individuals from floodwaters or dangerous situations as a result of these storms. These storms also forced road closures, whether they were through washouts, through extended rain periods, or just simply rain waters or floodwaters overtopping evacuation routes. US 19 was inundated and it had to be closed during Hurricane Helene. We had portions of many roads, state roads out on the east side too, that are closed as a result of the riverine flooding.
Little Road also.
Yes, and, yeah, and overtopped there just south of Mitchell, yes. And we witnessed that. And these are major routes. Thank goodness we have Ridge Road, you know, in a lot of cases. So, again, these are ways that we do that. I want to just, if you could indulge me here for a second, I've got two short videos of just to demonstrate some of the conditions that our first responders were working in to rescue people. Can you play? I don't know if I can do that here enough. Maybe I can. So you can see there's an individual literally holding on to a stop sign as our...
Oh, my God.
...miles naked there. And you know how tall those stop signs are?
Where is this?
I believe this is in Hudson, yes.
I don't understand people not evacuating. We need to replay this when the next warning comes to evacuate.
And then the next one here, similar instance.
Oh, Lord.
These are dark areas. It's night. There's no electricity. People are scared.
Is there someone holding on to the bottom of that tree?
Yeah.
Yeah, the first responder is kind of keeping the boat steady on the tree as they rescue the folks out of the water.
It's amazing we didn't have anyone perish. It's just amazing.
Like, how soon after the storm did our team start going out there?
Our first responders responded immediately, Commissioner, as long as the wind situations and I'm sure I've got reports of folks probably bending the rules a little bit to preserve life and safety. They...we will continue to operate as long as those winds remain below, I think, 40 miles per hour is that. And if you've ever been in 20 or 30 mile-per-hour winds, I can tell you the difference between 30 and 40, you really can't tell. But our first responders with the sheriff's office, our dive teams, our Trent Trustee, we had everybody out there and they performed marvelously out there in those conditions. And in fact, there was some conditions even too, when you looked at the power loss of Helene, where we had to make the decision to actually cut power in certain areas. Our first responders going in, even in insulated suits, feeling tingling in the water, you know, and so having to make those decisions to reduce the power.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, I got two slight stories. I had two families that were getting ready to go. They were packed up, did the stuff. They were getting ready to go. And one gentleman was so tired doing, elderly senior citizen down in Jamar, he fell asleep after he got done and got trapped. Another former deputy with his son, they were getting ready to go out of Sea Pines and they got stuck because it came in so fast. So, for us to be able to take these people that maybe were gonna get ready, didn't get ready, they were probably doing the right thing, it was just a fast-moving storm that all of a sudden, bam, you were trapped. So, that was a great move going on. I know we said we're not gonna be able to go get you, but that was phenomenal work for the whole team to go out there and just save lives. That was awesome.
And your point's well made. Sometimes it comes fast. And these evacuation orders, we issue them days in advance or as far in advance as we can. And it's a balancing act because, you know, Pinellas evacuates through Pasco, Pasco, you know, so there is a little bit of orchestration when we time our evacuation orders too. So, sometimes if you do wait to the last minute, you may not get out. But our teams perform marvelously. And I forgot to mention too, we had support too of not only our Pasco County Sheriff's Office, as I had mentioned, and our first responders here, but we had folks from Ohio, Louisiana, Texas that came and supported us too with both during the rescue piece and urban search and rescue post-storm as waters were receding through both storms. So, just a fantastic showing as a country out here. Do you want to add something, Commissioner, before I move on?
You know, I, as I've done for the last three hurricanes, but this one much more. You know, I, as I've done for the last three hurricanes, but this one much more, for two and a half, for, well, almost three days until Thursday at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock where I just couldn't do it anymore, I packed up my Gulf Harbor's house and moved it pretty much myself to Mayor Stida's house and to a storage. But I was the only person that I saw in Gulf Harbor's doing that. And even my husband, it's not coming, we'll be fine. And, you know, and all the other ones, the water went out. But I think it'll be different in the future. I have a question on these two and this amazing rescue. How did you know they were there? How did we know they were there?
Unless...
Because they're not calling from holding on to the tree. So, and then thank, I'm just so grateful to our first responders, but I hope so much that our folks evacuate next time.
I think Chief Gwynne can shed some color on that. Go ahead.
Hi, Commissioners. Ryan Gwynne, Inner Fire Chief, Pasco Fire Rescue. This actually was spawned from a 911 call that came in. And both of these rescues were actually found as they were still searching for the individual that made the 911 call. So it's kind of, you know, by happenstance that these two individuals were even picked up to begin with. And as you can see, it's very dark, there's no power anywhere in the neighborhoods. To be able to recognize these people, to just be able to hear screams in the background is, you know, an act of God that we made these rescues, so.
Is it raining in this photo? I think I saw pounding rain coming by. You can't always tell. And she's holding on to something. Oh, my, I wonder how long she was holding on to that sign?
Probably for quite a while.
Ah, breaks my heart. What a nightmare.
And again, you know, the investments that the board has made in these operations, and quite honestly, we've identified areas where we were short of equipment and maybe we need to invest in some different types of things. We're able to save life and property as a result of that. So just thank you. Thank you for that. I want to switch now a little bit to the riverine flooding aspect. This is a video that was put out by the Southwest Water Management District to talk a little bit about it. So we haven't really covered a lot, but listen, the Anclot River flooded on this side. And, you know, as the public comment talked about Thousand Oaks, again, that all drains into the Anclot Basin. And the Anclot Basin, which is tidally influenced as well, you know, pushed back. And then also, a lot of the tributaries flooded in. And again, unprecedented amounts of rainfall that we saw through those areas. So I just want to show you this quick video, just again, perspective on the flooding and what we are currently even experiencing now. The Withlacoochee River, it's still at major flood stage and will be for a long time, weeks, we believe. But go ahead and hit play, please. Thank you.
Many rivers in the Tampa Bay region have been severely impacted by flooding from Hurricane Milton. The only floods of record higher than what we're experiencing now, you'd have to go back to 1933 and 1934. I'm Dr. Mark Folkerson. I'm a chief professional engineer with the Southwest Florida Water Management District. I'm pretty sure we probably got trillions of gallons of water that hit the earth's surface. That water's got to go somewhere. A portion of it evaporates, a portion of it tries to soak in the ground. Where we stand, near the town of Trilby, the Withlacoochee River is crested above what the 1960 peak was. Because we had Hurricane Milton in early October, which is right at the end of the wet season, all of our creeks, lakes, rivers, wetlands, swamps, everything's full or aquifer, our groundwater levels are full. So that just causes that rain to not really have anywhere to go, really, soaking the ground and it's going to run off the surface a lot more. The Withlacoochee River is 160 miles long and its watershed, or the area of land that collects that rain and runs it into the river, is over 2,000 square miles. It's all or part of eight different Florida counties. We get a lot of rain across the whole thing. It takes time for that rain to hit the land surface and to make its way to the river. When we get flooding like this, we send crews of folks out into those affected areas. We're doing inspections and assessments of the flooding. We're looking for debris, making sure a lot of the rivers are flowing, there's not downed trees that are maybe holding those floodwaters back on somewhat worse. We're also out there trying to document the flooding and to gather elevations from those peak flood levels so that we can better understand how a rainfall like this has affected each of these watersheds so that we can then share that with the public and help everyone make better decisions.
And so, of course, we continue to experience that flooding. But early on from both storms, I'm very, very proud of our team. We were able to deploy immediately and begin damage assessments, and in fact, including aerial assessments, which are kind of a new product for us, which will bolster our capability to both understand what happened from a flood perspective and calibrate models, but also to help us continue to assess damage. We estimate over 400 structures were destroyed as a matter of Hurricane Helene. Those basically become uninhabitable. But over 5,000 structures considered to have with major damage that will require repairs. You know, and as Milton continues to wreak havoc with not only riverine flooding but closed basins, we have closed basins that are popping off into other closed basins just because the water has nowhere else to go. That will take time as well because we cannot pump those closed basins out until there is a place to pump that water to. And it does have to percolate naturally. But over, close to 30 structures destroyed right now that we know of, we still continue to assess, 1,600 structures with major damage. And of course, you know, the big change, the big difference is Hurricane Milton provided widespread power outage, unlike Helene where that power outages were contained mostly to the west side of US 19. We're estimating probably, and this number will probably go higher, $1 billion worth of damage just in this county alone. And again, we talk about power restoration. That obviously is kind of the first step to help our citizens feel normal again, right? Hot shower, lights on at night, air conditioning, right? These are things that come through. And as I mentioned, you know, during Hurricane Helene, we had two stories of two very different types of power outages. In Hurricane Helene, we were hampered a little bit because of the saltwater intrusion into electrical components. Actually, this is a picture of an actual fire that started in one of the neighborhoods, I think over in Sea Ranch area, actually. Power was restored, breaker was clicked, snap, spot, fire. And so we were able to use best practices. And while it may have taken an extra day or two to help folks get their power back on, I feel like we did a very good job of educating the public and making sure that we got power back on the right way. And of course, Milton with the widespread regional damage, our power companies were out there working tirelessly. WREC, REC, did a phenomenal job. I think they were first done and then offering to help both, especially with TECO, who, TECO had widespread damage throughout their entire service area, both Hillsborough Polk and Pasco County. And Duke Energy, again, did what it needed to do. So I'm very happy to report that any power outages now at this point are strictly related to property damage. On the recovery side, again, we provided early resources during both storms. And this was hampered, right? This was kind of a start and stop. We, when we finished with Hurricane Helene, we had points of distribution that were established. And a point of distribution, or a pod as it's called, is a place where we can hand out water, where we can hand out food to those who need it. We try to co-locate comfort stations with those pods where we can. And those comfort stations include trailers, modular trailers that have clean restrooms, showers, the biggest draw is laundry facilities, right? And so making those for those that are displaced or have their homes damaged is great. But we also recognize too, that this is also straining on folks mentally. And so we made available immediately, and thanks to our partnership with Bay Care, a mental health resources hotline, which is still available to folks, we made it available, of course, to our employees because getting through a crisis like this, for some people, it could be the last straw for a lot of folks. So it's very difficult to deal with this. Our human services folks took in over 1,300 requests for service. And so these are folks that may or may not need case management, but these are folks that are desperately in need of things, whatever they may be. That could be housing, that could be meals, that could be a whole host of human services activities. And of course, we started early with debris management. And again, I know debris management can be a touchy issue depending on where you're at in the county and the timing. But I will say that Pasco County was first out of the gate. Our debris crews with our Public Works and Solid Waste teams were out there working within 24 to 36 hours of both storms, trying to clean up. And as we waited for our larger contracts to get into place. And I'll go...
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get really too deep into debris, is just that so many people of our own employees had flooding and had damage and didn't, they weren't even touching their own homes to be able to serve the public and work tirelessly to do that. So I think that needs to be said and just a huge thank you to them because they were, they put the county and the citizens before their own needs.
I think Director Fossa just started taking his shutters down this weekend.
I still, like, can't even move in my house, so...
Correct, yes. And there's a lot of that. And thank you for that comment. As I mentioned before, we had more folks take advantage of our sheltering opportunities during Hurricane Milton, tenfold, as you can see. Roughly 485 during Helene, over 5,800 during Hurricane Milton. And look at those pets. You know, it's, we have a chuckle about it with the number of pets, but pets are like family to people. And so our animal services team really stepped up to not only handle the dogs and cats, tortoises and the flying squirrel, I'm even told, were in there. So, but nevertheless, right, there are people that will not evacuate because they don't want to leave their pets behind. So it's important. And again, so we have numerous federal, state, county volunteer organizations working together, again, to help recover, senior services providing shelf-stable meals to folks. And again, our team members in community development are getting folks in hotels, we're case managing. Throughout the storm, our public transportation teams offering free rides, trying to get people to comfort stations or to shelters, back and forth, did Yulman's work. And again, we're now looking at temporary housing. This is the next step, right? And so you can see, we've got a number of people that are still in shelters, folks that require case management. And we have set up something we're calling Pasco Hope. So you remember a couple of board meetings ago, we purchased a property on Grand Boulevard? And we are adding what are referred to as pallet homes as well as trailers. Our Public Works teams, utilities teams, facilities teams went out and prepared the site in an expedient manner. And I think that by Monday, we will be able to begin temporary sheltering housing, temporary housing for residents displaced by this storm. So we already have 100 candidates, potential candidates, that meet certain qualifications already identified. And this, again, is to help people get back up on their feet. So, you know, just a lot of team effort, you know, Kathy, Eric, Jason, you know, from, you know, JP, the whole team here really pulled together to make this happen. It's one of a kind. And I think on Thursday, we will be doing a little more of a public outing on this because it is, it is something that we should be proud of, is something that we have provided to our citizens. Even when Kevin Guthrie from the state was here on Sunday, he was impressed, blown away at how well this county is responding to this disaster. And you mentioned our employees. Well, we also had employees hit and hurt by the storm as well. And so we had to decide that there has to be something that we can do for them. And so as a county, we do have a disaster leave pool. So we have a pool of hours that have been donated over time, and so we're allowing folks to draw off of those hours. We also, you know, we usually do a buyback, so we allow folks to sell some of their PTO time, but recognizing that if you've got bills to pay, if you've got things that you need to get done to repair and recover your life from a storm, because I need these employees to work for us, right? As Commissioner points out, they're trying to get their life, so they're kind of stuck between two competing priorities, right? But we could at least provide them with a little liquidity and allow them to sell back some of their PTO time. And of course, we have offered, you know, the ability for our constitutional officers to do similar programs because these public servants, you know, we need them now and we need to give them the peace of mind that their homes and families are going to be taken care of. We also offered free, again, the mental health through Bay Care and an employee resource center. This is Pasco County employees helping Pasco County employees through donations. And thank you to Paul Bariclato, who has really kind of led the effort from our public services branch in setting this up for our employees. Debris. So debris is something that will be with us for a very, very long time. You know, we did some things during the Helene-Milton transition, as I'll call it, because we were extremely concerned about the debris from Helene becoming missiles or underwater hazards to our first responders going in to do rescues and things like that. And so we moved very expeditiously with some expedient, very expedient contracting to try to get as much of that up as we could within the span of less than 72 hours. We did very well. I'm very proud to say that it worked. We had very little of that debris move around, which is fantastic. So debris pickup is going to be a combination of forces. It's going to be a combination of our county forces and then augmented by our larger contractor resources. And I'll get into that in a little bit. But there are significant challenges when it comes to debris removal. 1.4 million cubic yards of debris. The scale of this event is like none that we have ever seen. That is 10 times larger than what we experienced under Hurricane Irma in terms of just total amount of debris. And quite honestly, I think that number's probably higher. You just, you know, these are estimates at this point. But the scale, just that alone is enough to litter 700 football fields, right, of just, you know, one yard deep worth of garbage across. So the scale is high. But maximizing FEMA reimbursement rates, because the cost of that cleanup will be in the tens of millions of dollars. And so the federal government through FEMA is stepping in, providing some additional reimbursement opportunities for us, which we need to take advantage of. I think the governor made that very, very clear in a statement that he made here in Pasco County. And I think we're up to the challenge. But we want to maximize FEMA reimbursement. Otherwise, those costs will just be borne by our citizens at the end of the day and come from reserves and then we'll have to make budgetary decisions. Resources, again, this is a regional event. So post-Milton, post-Helene is now a regional event and the competition for resources is high. Sarasota Counties, Manatee County, Hillsborough, Pinellas, we're all competing for the same folks. And then, of course, the expectations of the public. And the public has a right to want to, you know, recover, relive their lives. And so we want to make sure that we do that as expeditiously as possible, but understanding that, golly, man, my trash can be picked up every week, why can't I be on your street? And it's just, again, it's the scale of an event. But we are trying. We're working very, very hard to stay on top of this. We've collected 143,000 cubic yards of debris. That was as of Sunday. I'm sure those numbers are higher now. We continue to make gains in efficiencies as we learn more in how to operate as we kind of move into the 10th day of debris removal. So a little more on debris removal. We waive tipping fees. So if you're a resident and you have storm-related debris, you can come across the scales, no problem whatsoever. We are not charging for that. We have a GIS tool that's coming out for debris reporting. So if there's areas that, you know, you think maybe we don't know about, there's a tool that's out there, that's coming, that's forthcoming. We're also going to have a GIS tool forthcoming in the next day or two. They told me today, but I'll temper expectations, say maybe tomorrow, that will kind of try to set expectations on where we are operating and where we are going to be within the next 72 hours. So that is coming. And so we do have a plan. We had a plan when we came up with Helene. That got turned on its head with Milton. So, but we continue to figure out prioritization, pickup, scheduling and duration of this for debris pickup countywide, recognizing that some areas of the county aren't even in recovery yet, they are still weathering the disaster. And so we know that there will be more as a result when those floodwaters recede.
A quick question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, how long, do we know how long we're going to keep those tipping fees waived? Is it a 90-day thing?
I mean, probably.
I mean, started emptying out my Gulf Harbor's house.
We monitor everything and when things seem to decline, then we'll look at it. But right now, it's waived as a part of the local state of emergency. So as long as we're still under the state of emergency, I intend to keep those fees waived for residential, right? So if you bring it, bring it across. So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I like to say, because I think it's been such a great thing that we did pre-Milton by hiring those people to go out there. They did a phenomenal job. They were like all people in the neighborhood, used to live there, wanted to help out. So the passion was there to do a great job and they cleaned up in a phenomenal way. And it was like across the board. What I've also seen this past week or so, past few weeks, when they go out and take care of their trash, if they can, that frees up the other stuff to keep things progressing. Someone go down the street, they're not having to hit every single house. So I saw so many trucks out the past week. So by making that free for them is a critical thing.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. So we're going to, we recognize that. That needs to happen. That, that needs to happen. And then we are working to augment our contractor forces. Unfortunately, we had one, we, we have two debris contractors. I'm, I'm not going to name names. One of those debris contractors, unfortunately, I'll just say, kind of let us down. And so we, we need to augment. And that, that was really affecting more the northwest portion of the county, which was the area that, that we, we provided to them. And we're, we, we have an RFP out currently on the street, and, and it closes, close the business on, on Thursday. So we intend to move very quickly to try to augment and bolster these contractor forces. And I know the state has been very receptive too, in trying to see if we can find a solution for more small and medium haulers to be able to, to, to work and augment within, within the system. There, there, there's efficiencies in management that, that come. With, with Milton bearing down on us, I think we all had a very singular point of focus of, of a pending disaster with a certain timeline. We're now in a, in a, in a different, in a different stage.
Mr. Chairman.
I saw, you know, I talked to you about glass and everything in the street, and how, how are we going to deal with that? I literally saw a lady yesterday with a shop vac on her yard, because there's glass all in that grass, and nails and stuff. So I'm concerned, we're going to see effects from this for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, you basically turn the whole county into a giant construction site.
Yeah.
I just wanted to also just give a shout out to Branford and his team for his pilot program, if you want to go into that for, for a minute. I, I think that.
Certainly. Yeah, yes, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. I, I don't know, did I have a picture of that operation? That was actually, if you go here, that first picture is, is some of that operation. So what it is, is we, we took our public works and solid waste crews, and now we actually have some augmentees from the state to basically work at night. One of the, one of the hardest things that we were figuring out is we have these large grapple trucks, and there's reasons why we do that, for FEMA reimbursement purposes. There's compaction, and there's, there's efficiencies that are, that are gained by that. But at the same time, they can't operate everywhere. And folks want to, we, we had some neighborhoods with one way in, one way out traffic, so we just said, hey, look, if we, if we work after hours, and we can close roads, and we can get heavy equipment onto roads and load things differently, I think we can put a dent in this. And so the first, the fir-, we, we tried it over a series of three or four nights, and now I think we're doing it on a regular basis. We captured about 94 tons of, of garbage. The next night, it was about 110. The next night, we're, we did, we did 200 on Sunday night with, with, with this, with this. And so kudos to our team for really making that work, and kudos to, to the leadership of that team for coming up with these ideas that are, that are leading the way. And so our landfill operates 24 hours for that, for that side in orders for us to continue to make those, make those things efficient. So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Want to follow up with, just one second, is that also, I'd like the community to know that the whole Florida delegation worked together to try and get this garbage reimbursed by FEMA.
Yes.
That it took the entire, all of the, everybody to do this.
And there's, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. I know you all were instrumental in that, as well as our, our delegation at the state level and the federal level.
That's what I'm saying, everybody.
To really kind of say, hey, we've got back-to-back disasters here. We need to think about things a little differently. And can we free up some of this administrative bureaucracy stuff that'll help us get things done? And so I just appreciate all of that help and support because it is making our jobs easier out there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, and don't forget to look this way.
You jumped right in the first time, relax.
Chair talking a lot. I have a time certainly to let him talk.
However the chair would like, I can continue.
How many more slides do you have? I know we interrupted you.
I'll tell you what.
I'm not trying to cut you short.
Let me finish with debris, and then, and then we'll talk about kind of the next phase, which is building, building back better. I, I think it would be a logical stopping point.
I have a question on, one thing on the debris.
Yes, ma'am.
Just driving around yesterday, I, I drove all the way down through Bailey's Bluff and everywhere, and I noticed that some people put the debris way up close to their door, where that clause not going to reach. So they may have cleaned a whole street, but that house that put all their stuff way up by their door and in front of their garage or wherever, how legally can we go get that without driving on their yard and just destroying it?
We can't and we won't.
The answer is we can't.
We can't and we won't. And you won't get reimbursed if you do. Yeah.
Okay, so we need to get that message out there, because I saw quite a few houses that I saw they got left behind, and I'm sure that's the reason.
Yeah, there, there is information that's out there. And again, of course, we, we, we continue to beat the drum on that.
I just want to say, Mike, you have been so phenomenal in this whole thing. And I know from the past week with me and the calls we've had between FEMA and Congressman Bill Racus, who did a phenomenal job getting the letter, Senator Scott pushing pressure. And I, I know I bombarded with you guys just forwarding on emails that I got and texts that went on, but what was going on at my district. But I got to tell you, when I walked into the, in the meeting yesterday with a board with me to go talk about this, as calm as you were, I thought I was going to get a glaring look. But he was so professional every step of the way. And we got all the discussion, and your actions that you made to like get the RFP out already, coming up on Thursday. I'm just going to say, you're a tremendous leader, and what you've done through this is phenomenal. We've got a ton more work to do, but I just want to give you some kudos because you're not getting enough of them. What you've been doing through this whole thing has been absolutely phenomenal, so thank you for that.
I, I appreciate the kind words, and it's, it is a team effort. We are backed, you know, that we can't, we can't do this alone. And I just appreciate everything that this group has done to support me and my team so we can go out there and do the things that they do. They make it happen at the end of the day, so.
As long as you give him his run.
And you know what? I need to.
Uninterrupted, he'll be fine.
And you know, I got to give a shout out to Jeff as well. Jeff's team has been phenomenal through this. We, we've actually, I feel like we have, we've, we've, we've got a, we've got a different model working, and, and things have been phenomenal. So the support that we have gotten from the county attorney's office, Jeff, I would just say thank you to you and your team as well for that.
And, and did this not show, and maybe to all our federal supporters out there, how much we need our new EOC?
Yes.
Yes.
And hopefully, we're, you know, that's got to be our gift to all our first responders who worked so hard. Now that we've seen what other counties have and what we're dealing with, you know, we, we've really got to lift that up and get, get going on our new EOC.
Right.
Yeah.
So just the last couple of things here with, with debris removal, and then I'll, I'll pause the presentation, Mr. Chair, we'll allow Dr. Who to come up. Interlocal agreements, we've entered into interlocals, or are in the process of entering into interlocals, Zephyr Hill State City and San Antonio, where we would assist them with debris removal. I believe the Westside Cities have piggybacked on our agreements, so they're kind of handling their, their debris. And again, we continue to evaluate additional sites because we know we're going to need them, and, and looking at ways. And then this is just a map, you, you know, the, kind of showing that we've, we've broken the county down into zones, and this is the type of interactive thing that you will see online here, where it kind of shows which zones we're working in, and then there will be sort of a 72-hour look ahead, so you'll know when we'll be in your neighborhood. But just because we're in, in your neighborhood may not mean we hit your house, because as quick as we get stuff cleaned up, I'm seeing stuff get pushed, more stuff coming right back out. So this is a process.
Well, I'd like to thank, thank you, Mike, and the team for contracting John Power to come back to help in that cleanup, because he's, in his past, he's been there doing that and knows how to do it. So I think it'll make things move. He's on the contract, so. But he's going to help with that removal of that debris, and he went through it right after I first got elected, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I'll step aside then.
He's a good person for that.
I'll, I'll pause. I only have a few more slides left, but let's do the time, sir.
Okay.
Good morning. David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director. It's my pleasure today to introduce the board. You, you know him, but reintroducing Dr. Patrick Who. Dr. Who is the CEO and President of Moffett, Moffett Cancer Treatment and Research Center, and he's here to give an overview and a status report on SPIROS FL. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Welcome, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the commissioners. We're just very excited about our partnership together and what we're building here in Pasco County. We do feel that we will develop treatments here that will go across the globe, and we're excited by what's happening together. We could not do this without the county's support. From the county to the sheriff's office to the EDC, we've had nothing but support. We've been to, with the EDC to Japan to try to drum up business together. We've been to Europe with them, and so it's just been very exciting to be here with all of you. We think there's tremendous potential for the future. So we feel is, as you know, this SPIROS campus, SPIROS means hope in Latin, hope for patients, hope for cancer patients, hope for patients with autoimmunity, with infectious diseases. We think we can develop this with the state of the science today, with Moffett anchoring that down. It's a 775-acre campus. We have Phase 1A, which is a number of buildings already going up with all of your help that we're excited about. We feel there are a number of focuses in this campus. One is delivering the best care to patients today. So we have patient, patient care facilities. We want to get them closer to the patients so they don't have to drive into our other campuses. And so that's one of the major focuses. We have partnerships coming along with other hospital systems. And then we want to work with biotech to develop the treatments for tomorrow. It's very important to develop things in the lab, but unless we have a company behind it, it's not going to scale across the globe. So we do feel that bringing in biotech companies and big pharma, small pharma, is going to be important to this in order to scale our influence. And third, we want this to be a great place to work. So we want to attract the best and brightest employees throughout the country.
Notice the cyclist down there on the right. I just wanted to draw attention to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we do feel everyone wants one of these in their backyard, a big biotech cluster. And so what's going to distinguish us, and number one, it's we're all working together. It's, we've had such tremendous support. We don't think that happens in every community, by the county, by the state. We think Florida is a very business-friendly community, and we have a strong anchor in Moffett Cancer Center. We do look around the country, and where these are successful, it's where you have a very strong anchor. And we have, we, we work very hard with our patient care. We have six, over 600,000 outpatient visits a year, and 90,000 unique patients see us every year. So that provides a background, not only for patient care, but for research. We do $300 million worth of research a year, which is funded through our operating margin, federal grants and state grants, as well as philanthropy. And we think this is going to be a very, very strong anchor to develop this biotech And we're really excited about one particular technology that we're experts in and treated 1,300 patients, more than anyone in the world on, and that's T-cell therapy. T-cells are an immune cell of the body that can go out and seek cancers. In this video, the T-cells are the little blue cells. It's like David versus Goliath. The tumors are the big green cells. When the T-cells see the tumor, they do what I call the kiss of death, and they secrete proteins to poke holes in the tumor, and the tumor dies as indicated by the orange dye. When the orange dye comes in, that's the dead tumor. And then the immune cell will just go to another tumor cell and kill it, and go to another tumor cell and kill it. Well, we've learned to take these immune cells out of the body, put genes in them to help them even kill the cancer better, recognize the cancer function better. We've learned to grow them to billions and give them back to patients. And so with this, and the important part is these immune cells also live for decades in the body. So giving the patients what they want. Every patient that comes to us wants a long-term durable response. And so we do feel that these treatments will help to anchor and start to galvanize our biotech community. This is cell therapy companies. There are thousands of cell therapy companies out there. They want to work with Moffett Cancer Center, and these are the first biotech companies that we think we're going to be able to attract. It's very important that these immune cells live for a long time in the body. A couple of weeks ago, I had a patient come to me. We had treated him when he was just out of high school. We had to wait till he was 18 so he'd be eligible for our trial. We gave him immune cells, and at that time, his melanoma, it started in the skin, went throughout his body, including his brain. He had a bleeding brain matter. He pretty much wiped out his cancer a few, a couple of years ago. He came to my clinic with his baby that he had after going to college, getting married, having a job. And now I just saw him a couple of weeks ago, his wife is pregnant with her, with her second child. And so it's just very fulfilling that these kinds of therapies can have the impact that they have. And we feel that by bringing in biotech companies that can produce these therapies, innovate them, they're already FDA-approved, a lot of them, malignant leukemias, the, the blood tumors. But now the next step is to get them to work for all the solid tumors, which cause 90% of the deaths from cancer. And so that's where we're going to head, and that's why it's very meaningful what we're doing together. So we really appreciate that. This is just what we're building there. If you go there, we'll welcome you anytime. I know a lot of you have been there. We have a proton center going up. A proton is a particle that we can hit at the cancer, and it also stops. So if the patient has left breast cancer, it will hit the breast cancer but won't go further into the heart. That's why it's so important to have proton for certain diseases where the disease is close to a structure that you don't want to hit. And the proton, there are a lot of people have proton centers. This is a state-of-the-art, really best-in-the-country machine that we're going to get from a, a very high-end place in Belgium. It's going to be able to do and deliver all of the proton energy that would normally take 30 minutes in less than a second. With that, it would just shred the cancer. So we're very excited to get this up. The walls are going up. Walls are very thick for something like this. And pretty soon, we're going to have the equipment in a few months coming in through the port and shipped up to Pasco, our, our, our property there. And so we're really excited about that. We have an ambulatory treatment center that will have IV therapy, radiation therapy, everything that the patient will not have to travel out of Pasco County for now. We have a 300,000-square-foot research center there that's going to help to innovate. We're going to have dry labs. We are moving our engineering team there. It's really important to have the hard sciences mixed with the biological sciences. So we're bringing in, we have, we've had a machine learning group for four years now, way before it was fashionable. And so AI, machine learning, very important. We're going to have that housed there as well as our engineering group. Our head engineer, Greg Sawyer, he should come here and talk to you guys sometime. He's very special. He's had melanoma himself throughout the body, came to Moffett Cancer Center 10 years ago, got a curative immunotherapy trial, and then he switched from working on the Mars rover to cancer.
Wow.
And so he's a very compelling story. And, and so he's watched his boys grow up, and he's just dedicated to cancer. He's already started companies. He's bringing in engineering companies. He's going to do things like scale cell therapy, because to grow billions of immune cells, it's hard to do that for the 10 million people across the globe that die of cancer every year or so. We're, he's going to help us scale that. It's really going to be an engineer that's going to help us do that. So that's all going to be, be happening in our Pasco campus. I want to thank you again. And I have a number of people from Moffett to get today here. Jamie Wilson, our Head of Government Relations, John Algier, our VP of Construction Operations out there. We have Merritt Martin, my Chief of Staff as, as well. So happy to take any questions. And I want to, again, just tell you how much we appreciate your help and collaboration.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for coming and giving us an update. I actually have not made it to one of the tours, so I, I need to get that scheduled. But we're just so excited that you're coming, and of course, we, we are here for anything that you need. So I'm, I don't know, my, I'm just so proud that it's, it's in our county, and we, we talk about it around the world, how, how special this is and how special you are, so.
Mr. Mariana.
Thank you. It's just amazing what you have for technology coming our way, and, and the facility you're building out here, and what a great addition you're going to be to this county. So greatly appreciate you coming and sharing with us what's going on. So greatly appreciate you coming and sharing with us what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Jaeger.
Very impressive. I love that we're going to have this right in our own backyard, because if I understand correctly, it's Miami and Jacksonville, right?
With the proton therapy?
Proton therapy.
Yeah, they have proton therapy. And I think this is going to be probably the most up-to-date state-of-the-art machine in the country. So really excited about that.
Yeah. And also just like recruiting. You guys are going to be able to recruit the best of the best, because who wouldn't want to live, work and play right here in Pasco?
Absolutely. It's wonderful to be in the heart of one of the fastest-growing counties in the country with bicycles and everything that people want to have. It's going to be a wonderful area to live in.
Mr. Waite.
I'm serious. You've got to give them a good quality of life if they want to live here.
I don't know if a bicycle brought them off at the Pasco County, but.
No, but it'll bring their, the quality of life that we'll offer will bring, help bring their employees here.
Doctor Who, you know, just incredibly grateful out of all the places you all landed. You landed close to home and landed in Pasco. Half of what you said went way over my head as far as the medical ease of what you're talking about. But just incredibly grateful that Moffett's here and to Speaker Moffett, who really kicked off, you know, what Moffett Cancer Center has become today. And very grateful for your partnership and having USF in our backyard. And just excited to see what the future holds, not just for employment and economic benefit and national and international notoriety, but for the lives of, you know, folks of all ages that we might be able to save and, you know, see what their futures might be able to do, because they had an opportunity to live. So thank you for all of your work, you know, what you're doing. You know, you're going to bless generations to come. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing. So we have a program that we helped fund in the county that I was involved in starting called AM Skills. It's American Manufacturing Skills. We used to call it Skills Initiative, but now we just say AM Skills. It's a, it's a, right now, it's a 13,000-square-foot training center in robotics, mechatronics, all things manufacturing. And we are, we got money from the legislature to expand our high school program. So we will be opening up a, we're not going to call it a manufacturing academy. I don't recall the name of it. But we're going to be in the high school in Angeline with our AM Skills Academy that will be a feeder for workers for you. So we're excited to have that relationship with AM Skills and Moffett. And I'd love to give you a tour over here. It's over here on holiday, but we go out into the communities. But certainly would love to give you a tour. And we've been called one of the best, one of the best in the nation as far as the training program goes, so.
Well, thank you. We're going to need that. We are going to need, for example, to grow these immune cells to billions. We're going to need workers.
Yep.
We're going to need workers with two-year degrees, with four-year degrees, with six-year degrees, with eight-year degrees. We're going to need the whole gamut of workers to help us save these lives, not only in Pasco County, but we're going to develop the treatments that we think we can go scale throughout the globe. So thank you.
Yep.
Doctor Who, I can't, I can't tell you enough how grateful I am for you and the Moffett team to be here in Pasco County. Cancer disease is very terrible to everyone. It doesn't, doesn't eliminate anyone. Anyone can get this disease, and it's very harmful to all our citizens. So you being here and the fact that they have, being close to Moffett and be able to get the right kind of care in the future, that we hope that one day we see a total cure, which I know you're working toward. But it's, it's so grateful that I am of what y'all do and being here and being close to our citizens. So it will pay dividends, and I hope you come up with that cure sooner than later. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the death rates are starting to come down. And we do think, working together, we can drive them down further faster. So thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kabala.
And we all want to come out when that proton machine is coming up from the airport. We're going to get out there and wave flags or do something, shoot fireworks.
I think we need to have a proton cam so we can.
I'm sure they'll have a drone following it, right, Merritt? You're going to have a drone over that proton? Yeah. It's going to be an exciting day.
Might open up a wormhole. You have to be careful.
Okay, Mr. Kabala.
Thank you, sir. I've only got five more slides left here. Just want to talk a little bit about recovery efforts. So again, our public works team continues, continues to work. We have over 26 stormwater pumps currently deployed. I know the state's providing more assets as well. And again, these pumps will pump and will deploy when it is appropriate and safe to do so. So they are monitoring water levels daily. I don't even think I mentioned the Cypress Creek watershed. Cypress Creek watershed in the center of the county. Certainly some unprecedented levels of flooding there, too. But as such, we even had road washouts or full-on collapses of roads. I think at least, at least six roads are completely washed out. That's a picture there of Curly Road, actually, here, here in.
Is that north of 52?
Yes.
North, yes.
Yes, yes, on the east, northeastern portion of the county. And we're currently getting quotes. We have contractors in our stable that we can work with. And I know our team is already out getting quotes to do, to do repairs. Yes, sir?
One thing I would like to bring up. I heard some, from some contractors that they're asking for bids for some projects, but they're, I don't know if we've given them all the parameters they need to come up with the right price for those, fixing those roads, so.
Sure. And again.
They need to meet and be sure they have the parameters to give you the right kind of bid.
And I think there's a balance between how much information we can give to the contractor based on the expediency, right? I mean, if I spend nine months designing the fix, you will be very unhappy with us.
Oh, yeah.
So we certainly will have to, you know, we compensate contractors for the risk.
I can talk to you later about it.
Yes, sir, of course, absolutely. So we, again, fallen trees in roadways, pump trucks. We have moved water. And again, we have, we have gone through and done an evaluation of our public damage as a result of this. And we have received the green light for FEMA reimbursement. So there's, there's different categories of FEMA reimbursement. Category A is debris removal, which we have at 100% for 90 days. When that 90 days ends, we're still having some discussions on that because of the two storms. But then B is your preparatory actions. And then you've got cat C through G, which handle various things, such as utility damage, road damage, damage to parks, public facilities. And we've qualified for those, usually on a 75-25 type split. So it's great news. Federal government has heard all the work. And so we're, we're looking forward to not breaking the bank in responding to this storm, which kind of leads us to building back and building back better, if you will. We, in the local state of emergency, have waived building fee permit payments, right? So the permits are free, but they are still required. So, so again, we have, we have team members out there in the public. We've tried to go to where the hardest-hit areas are to make these, these pop-up permitting sites to encourage folks to do, to permit. We are putting them to the front of the line, so they do get expedited review. So if you have storm damage to your property, you don't, it's not going to sit there and wait forever to get approval. Oftentimes, I think they're even doing it on the spot at some, at some points. Mr. Murphy's shaking his head. So, excuse me. And again, we have these pop-up permitting sites at Gulf Harbor's Sea Ranch. Maybe presentation's over, I don't know. Pop-up permitting sites over Gulf Harbor Tax Collector Office. So thank you to Tax Collector for allowing us to co-locate on a few, few of those aisles up there. Sea Ranch Civic Association and Lakouchi Boys and Girls Club. And we'll continue to reevaluate the need for those. But this is in addition to online permitting, as well as our usual spots. We wanted to add this. By statute, temporary structures are allowed for up to three years. So if your home was storm-damaged and you are repairing it, there's, there are some thresholds that need to be met. You can, by law, have a temporary structure there to live in while you are making repairs to your prime residence. So just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. Florida Department of Emergency Management began individual damage assessments. And so that's basically kind of going door-to-door and kind of validating certain things. And so there's, there's a procedure and a process to do that. Residents can use those estimates that come out of, come out of that for their substantial damage estimates. So that's that 49% rule you hear us, you hear us talking about. To date, we've issued more than 600 permits for demolition permits, as well as plenty of re-roofs, electrical, mechanical permits. So far, in excess of $13 million worth of, worth of work has already started. And so again, I thank the Development Services Team for going out there and being ready to help folks rebuild as quickly as possible. And so on that, on the 14th, FEMA held a meeting, virtual and in person, over at our Hudson Library. It was, it was well-attended online. But there were a lot of questions, too, about what's the county doing? And so we've decided to go ahead and push a town hall-style meeting at the Historic Courthouse on the 24th. That's this Thursday. That's at 6:00 PM, I believe, where we'll have county, county team members on, on hand to do that. But you don't have to go to Dade City to do it. There is a virtual option, as always. We are a big county with a lot of, with a lot of different needs. And so that, that will be there. FEMA will be there prior to that, I believe, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Check our website with the Times. But to answer FEMA-type-related questions, to reach out to those folks on the east side that are just currently even still experiencing this, this disaster. And with that, I will avail myself to any other questions. I have team members here, too, if the board would like to discuss anything else on this matter.
Any questions? Mr. Mariano.
I just want to say, the, the response has been phenomenal. The team is just dedicated. And the debris, there's one gentleman out there. I saw him yesterday picking up in Hudson and it made a difference when the other company failed. And he says, "I've worked 27 days in a row, and I says, 'I'm doing it because my county needs me.'" I thought it was just the heart and soul of the way this whole county staff has been, has operated. Everyone from the EOC, you call in, things happen. Andy, what you've got with the tremendous team you put together. And JP, I tell you, the, the extra calmness you show through this whole thing, the organization of your people. And when they're out at these places, they're, they're looking also, if they see there's a need for someone to get help with some food or some ice, whatever. I mean, those guys are out there just serving the people. And it is just so impressive. It's meant so much to the people that are just like down and out. So, you know, with our community coming together in so many ways, but our team here doing it as well, the food has been donated over and over again. I mean, it's just, just been incredibly outpouring of support. And I will tell you, as bad as this has been so far, there's much work. I'm going to tell you, when these storms start coming down and the water start receding a bit, the east side is going to take a tremendous amount of work to get that back, get, get that back together, too, because that is just, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a long journey to get through to take care of that, too. But I think if we get the high focus to get rid of this trash that's out there right now that's in the way, we can start working on the bigger debris and then helping people on the, on the east side especially recovery, because it is going to be a struggle.
Yeah, they've started moving some of that debris.
Yeah, we are, we are hyper-focused on that. We understand that debris removal is, is a, is a top priority, as well as getting, getting those things reimbursed by FEMA as well. And then you do mention it, you know, 27 days. And I mean, I've got team members here, quite honestly, who have, who have done the same thing tirelessly, oftentimes through long, long 18 to 24-hour shifts. And, and I see a lot of EOC folks and our media team and folks here as well. I, if you could just indulge me, I'd just like to give them a round of applause, if that's okay. Thank you. We recognize there's still a long road ahead, and they'll, they'll continue to work tirelessly, you know, for, for the citizens of this county. So again, thank you for that. The last thing is just to remind, FEMA will actually be available through our town hall as well for additional questions, too. So I think it's going to be a great resource for folks.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Well, I, I just too want to say thank you to everybody. I'm finally not feeling 100% exhausted. I can't tell you how many times I went to bed at 8:30. Having two houses impacted by the storm and my son losing his house and moving in with us, it's been a lot. But I know some of you have gone through it as well, and I, I'm just really grateful to everybody. And when this is, I know it's going to take a month, a couple of months, but we need to have a, a big celebration when it's all over.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone.
And there's another fact, too, is the fact that we're taking pictures of this where we see high water and this. So it'll help us in the future with developments to make sure we set them at the right heights and possibly avoid some of this flooding that we're having, some issues in, in some developments now. We want to not have those flooding issues, so.
I was wondering if we could get a map, because I'd love to, I don't know the start and finish of, I have an idea of Cypress Creek. I think it goes under 54, because I think we've been buying part of that as one of the wildlife corridors. But I'd love to see on a map the, the flow of the with Lakouchi through the county. It's hard to see it when you're looking at the satellite. So I just want to understand more where these watersheds go.
With Lakouchi is out and spanked about a half mile each way.
I mean, with Lakouchi is actually up in Georgia.
Right now.
So.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah. But, so when you look for it on the map, it's.
Good time for you to speak, sir. I knew we'd work into having a presentation by you.
No, sir. Uh-uh. It's all me. No. We can get a copy of the watershed and have it displayed. We'll get it on a big map for y'all and get it out to y'all. It'll take a little bit of time, because we got to use GIS, and we got to use NWS and NOAA to get that map done, but we can do it.
Right. I understand that GIS is working on taking a map of how this looks right now so that we can use it in the future for the benefit of developments and people that are going to be building in the future. For some reason, we'll avoid some of the mistakes we've had in the past, so.
Well, unfortunately, this time, it was Mother Nature that took over.
Oh, yeah. That's true.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. Back in 2004, I was city manager in Dade City. And the last time, that Dixie Avenue area and around 23rd Street really flooded like it was. And the, learned a lot about the outflow from Javita through Denlinger and around behind 20, 21st Street, 23rd Street, by the high school, Royal Oaks, under the old railroad bed, round to, you know, south of Dade City and around to, around Jarrett Ford and Boiler Pond and all of that chain to the Larkin Canal. And the problem is, that's all very flat. And it's a very slow flow. And when the river's up, it ain't going nowhere. And that's what we're seeing now. I had the opportunity to drive around east side of Dade City yesterday and the water around people's homes and the streets still flooded there on the east side of the bypass and 301 and up in those areas. So it's, there was a graphic that you all put out that explained that outflow from Javita on around, which I thought was excellent.
I want to see.
And I tried to capture it so that at a point in time, which I hope will never use in the future. But that was an excellent graphic explaining a lot of that outflow around the, and through Dade City.
Yeah. And to add to that is, I hope in the future, when we get Morningside Drive coming across from 301 over to Fort King by the hospital, that some of that flooding is happening in that area there around Hickory Hill. Some of that will go away with the right cover height, and it'll take water out before those homes get flooded. So I've been working on that since, since I was with Swift Mud in 2007 to 2011. I've been trying to get that cover lower. The building of Morningside Drive is hopefully going to give me that opportunity to have that done, so.
Um, a question, was, how did the Moffett property hold up? Does anyone know?
David knows.
I don't know what.
Come up, David. You got the answer?
No? Excellent. Excellent.
Good.
You know, the woman who came from Thousand Oaks and Trinity Oaks? Just, and I don't, I've got her name.
Yeah.
I hope that she, I hope that my assistant went out and got her phone number, because I want to call her. But I don't, I don't recall how long ago. She said she moved into that area. But I know before I was the commissioner and during my first early years, we had massive meetings with, it's called the Trinity Flood Task Force, with congressmen, senators, Swift Mud, Army Corps, everybody, monthly to try and figure out how to help with that flooding. And the, the state and the county went in and spent millions and millions of dollars, frankly, cleaning up some of the waterways there that the neighborhood did not keep up. Like that BMP-5, there were trees growing in it. And you know what, guys? I haven't been out, seems to me, I drove by that road the other day, and I don't think, it may have grown in again. So we need to look at that BMP-5 and see if it's been maintained as a clear waterway. However, we will never be able to keep water from going out of a bowl. It's just a question of how quickly can we empty that bowl? And I know every time a storm, a big storm's coming, I just want those residents to know that I call staff, but they're already on it. We're, we're lowering the water levels. We are opening the gates, and we are trying to move as much water out as we can. But sadly, that community is really a 15-inch lower bowl. And I, a resident recently contacted me and asked me what happened to the PACE program. And I don't know if we ever really formally said that the, the resolution of that PACE program, where they were looking at holding the Anclot River back and storing it on the Starkey Wilderness Preserve, is that it was so costly that it was cheaper to buy the homes out that repeatedly fled. And I do believe we had some neighbors contact the county about being bought out that get water in there. And the answer, so, so we either need to buy those residents out or find a way to help them to elevate their houses. And some of them, it's just, it's really a matter of six inches or a foot, and they will be out of the water. And so maybe we have a town, a, a meeting for that community again and with FEMA and insurance people and, and let them know their options. But we will never be able to stop a river from going in there. We just, it's just, that's Mother Nature.
And the HOAs are in those areas. And the HOAs are in those areas, their job is to keep those areas clean.
Yeah.
But when I got elected eight years ago, they were having the same problem then.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to...
And we're going to keep them clean, so...
I, and I'm not sure whose responsibility, frankly, BMP5 is. Sometimes when we take on a, a swale or a pond or something, maybe it's our responsibility and we're not doing it. So, I, I don't know the answer to that, but we need to go look and make sure that... You know what I'm talking about, Jack? That long one? I walked it with Congressman Belaracus and...
Swift Mudd has the contractors that can clean those ponds, but the HOAs have to pay for it, for those communities.
Well, I, I think sometimes we take over responsibility.
Mariana?
You know, and I started with those meetings long ago, and when we had the Army Corps there, Swift Mudd was there, Congressman Belaracus had people there, we had all the HOAs that were there. And I, I think, you know, Dr. Gillis and Lou Friedland laid it out with Dan Waymar, it's a matter of conveyance getting it out there, and sometimes not going to convey either. But what we did for the improvements were great, but I think what, what, why that HOA suffers so much is maintaining it is, when the drought happened from years ago, all these sugar maples came in and multiplied, and all of a sudden, the wetlands got higher than the river flow. So, it couldn't even drain into them like it was even designed. It may be a good thing to go take a look at with the stormwater team, to let's go try to see if we do some emergency thing like we did over in Palm Terrace, draining out that, you know, draining out that spray field, to go dig that trench that we know where it's supposed to go, and maybe this is the time to get it done, because the Army Corps kept a lot of that work from getting done. This may be the time to go do it under the storm event, because, as they're going to suffer, because when we looked at, like, the reserve passed away when we cleaned that one out, because that was like plugged in, and that was, something was like, it was a foot wide, it's probably like eight feet wide now.
Yeah.
Where the water could flow and get it out there. And you look at Oak Ridge. Oak Ridge is after that. And what is Oak Ridge? Oak Ridge is dry as can be, because all the, all the culverts and everything else, all the drains are open. If we can help that HOA get that thing dug, especially where we have the advantage of the storm that's in right now and the flooding itself right now, I think it's the ultimate approach, because that may be, this may be the one time to get that fixed once and for all. Because all the great things we did, we got permitted, this is one they wouldn't let us go in and do, might be the perfect thing to go take a look at.
The other suggestion that had come out of some of the engineering work around that whole mess was to put a very large culvert under the center of Mitchell Boulevard. And, you know, maybe, maybe we can look at those numbers again and see if it makes sense, and maybe we can get some, if we can get some federal money for it.
Okay.
The other thing I want to, I brought this up on one of our 1:30 calls, after Irma, I think it was, was Kevin here? Kevin was here, Norma. We got a federal contract to clean up a part, a part of Anclot River. And I went and watched them a couple days. They were pulling, they were using inmate labor with a contractor, and they were pulling the trees out of the river and allow, clearing the flow. But they only did a section of it. I believe they went from Starkey Boulevard Bridge to Little Road. So, if you've ever looked at any of that river going further south, it is filled in with trees. And, and so, maybe we can get on that, and maybe there's some out on the others, in the other rivers that, you know, we can expand this and clean, clear out some of our rivers and get that flow going better.
Mr. Steinsteiner?
Mr. Chairman, I'll remind you again that if the Corps told you you couldn't do it, you still can't do it in a state of emergency. Now, on the flip side of that, this may be the time to approach the Corps.
That's what I'm saying.
And see whether, well, wasn't all to get it clear. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, that the state of emergency doesn't give you the, doesn't give you permitting authority. So, if you've got issues with either DEP or the Corps, you still got to go through those processes, but now may be the time that the Corps might be willing to take a second look at what they had denied several years ago and allow it. But just that caveat for the record.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Steinsteiner, I actually appreciate that opinion.
That's a first.
Actually, Andy Fawcett does tell me that we are looking at that with Tetra Tech, and it could be something that's reimbursable.
Right.
So, we're, we're exploring that legally.
All right. We're at a point, let's recess for lunch and be back here at 1:30.